Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Day of the Lodi and Morse Pradium, Antay Kalorano. The acronym is AMPAC, I'm Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 154, Class 154. What did we learn in Class 153? Well, we're still going over the basic understanding, the fundamental understanding, of the separation of church and state, right? The Moors have to understand the word church and state is now separated by a legal word called what? Public law and private law. So what is public law? Public law is what? The state. What is private law? That's religion. The Moors have to understand there's a separation between church and state. It is identified in law as what? Public law is the state and private law is religion, i.e. the church. So what's happening is the Moors are finally starting to understand how are we gonna uplift fallen humanity? The only way to uplift fallen humanity is through what? A state. It's through public law. We cannot uplift fallen humanity through what? Church. We cannot do it through religion. Why is that? It's because through public law, right, which is state rights, state rights is also recognized by what? International law. So your state constitution is a subject of international law, meaning your state constitution comes under what? The jurisdiction of international law. And international law recognizes the power of the state. It's all about state rights. So therefore, when you start with the Charter of the United Nations, it's all about what? State rights. It's United Nations. What does nation mean? States and countries. It's not united churches. It's United States, United Nations. That's public law. International law is public law. So under international law, we start to look at what? The statutes of the International Court of Justice, Article 38, says it's all about public law and international law. The rule of law, right? The practice of law, the customs of law. You must understand, everything is about public law of the state and the states recognize international law. For who? Civilized nations. How do you have a civilized nation? Catch the wordplay. When you read Article 38 of the statutes of the International Court of Justice, it says civilized nations. What's a nation? That's a state, i.e. a country. Meaning you cannot be a civilized nation, i.e. you can't be a civilized state without what? A state. You can't keep running around saying you have a tribe. You can't say you have a clan. It's all about state rights. So the Moors have to learn how to separate church and state, because on the church, it's private law. Private law is subordinate to what? Public law. Public law is superior. Private law is what? Inferior. What falls under private law? Well, that's church law. That's your church charters. All types of charters are private law. Because the state oversees all private law. Private law is second. Public law is first. What's public law? State rights. What's second? Religious rights. The state protects your religious rights. The whole world has moved on. After 1945, after the charter came out, it's all about state rights, period. And the Moors unfortunately have been spending decades talking about what? They intermixing both what? Church and state. It has created what? Confusion. And this is why the Moors are stuck on a hamster wheel, because they're intermixing church and state. But you have to make a separation of church and state. Why? Because international law recognizes states as having state rights and state superiority over what? Private law. The Moors are trying to intermix what? Public law and private law strangely mixed. It creates confusion. It creates what? Ambiguity. It creates a gray area. It creates what? A belief. Why does it create a belief? It's because what? There's no law that supports a hybrid. This is a hybrid. Public law can be supported by law. Private law is your church bylaws. That can be supported within the membership of your church. As soon as you try to create what? State and church strangely mixed. There's no laws for that. That's a hybrid. That's a Frankenstein. And this is why Moors have been spinning their tires. This is why Moors are stuck in the halfway house. This is why Moors are in the twilight zone. They're beyond what? The boundaries of law. We looked up the definition of twilight zone. I mean, anyone outside the boundaries of law. Why? Because you created your own vertical. You've intermixed what? Church and state strangely mixed, right in the center where you should be separating the two regarding state and church. Church and state. Right? That doesn't mean people can't have their practice of religion, but you must understand, if in fact you want to uplift fallen humanity, then what is it that actually failed? If you're saying uplift fallen humanity, how do you uplift? It's through state. It's called decolonization. Because if we gotta uplift, that means we fail. It says fallen humanity, right? Okay, where do we fall from? Government. We fell from our governments. The government is recognized by what? The state. But what Moors have been doing, they've been trying to enforce this thing called theocratic governments. What's a theocratic government? That's religion. What's ecclesiastical government? That's religion. What's apostolic type of government? That's religion. What's divine type of law? That's religion. But people turn around and tell you the temple is a state. That's an absolute lie. It's a bold-faced lie. And everybody knows the temple is not a state. We gotta stop doing this to the people. That's called what? Disinformation. What is disinformation? D I S. That's called what? Propaganda. That means you're willfully lying. There's a separation between church and state, and this is where the Moors are struggling. The Moors don't know how to separate the two. This is the problem. We'll talk about that today. I will show the Moors the history of what's going on through the International Court of Justice, right? The ICJ. Okay? We'll talk about territorial ties versus religious ties. You gotta make a distinction between these two. So let's get into the class, because the Moors wanna uplift fallen humanity, that means you wanna decolonize. The only way to decolonize is to do what? Emerge as a sovereign, independent state. You don't emerge as a sovereign, independent temple. None of the African states got their independence, call themselves a temple. None of the islanders got their independence, call themselves a temple. We gotta stop doing this. You must recognize that the FBI and the CIA has infiltrated and told all the Moors that say out loud that the temple is a state. That's disinformation. That's propaganda. That's what you must understand, alright? So we'll keep studying today. Alright, let's get into the class. Now, what I have up here is the Constitution of the Lodi and Morse Pradium, Antay Kalorano. This is a state constitution. Right? Which puts it in the status of what? Public law. Not private law. It's not a charter. It's an organic state. It refers to itself as a state. Alright, so this is AMPAC. The acronym is AMPAC. This Constitution of the Lodi and Morse Pradium, Antay Kalorano, alright? So all the Moors need their own constitutions as internal Moors states in each of the territory. Right? Such as the Moors in Wyoming. The Moors in Wyoming have to establish an internal Moors state, and that state must pledge its allegiance to what? The Empire Morocco, which is the mother state, right? Let's point that out. What's the mother state? What's the external state? What's the national state? That's the Constitution for the Empire Morocco. Alright? Always remember, states are persons in international law. So since states are persons to international law, the state, right, Empire Morocco, is a person in international law. So not only do the people have to pledge allegiance to the state, but guess who else has to pledge allegiance? The Constitution of the Lodi and Morse Pradium, Antay Kalorano, that is a person as well. AMPAC as a state is a person. The state itself has a nationality. What's the nationality of AMPAC's state? It's Moroccan. What's the nationality of the Empire Morocco as a person? We're talking person. What's the nationality of the Constitution for the Empire Morocco is what? Moroccan. Because states are persons in international law, and all persons have what? A nationality. All corporations have nationalities. All people have nationalities. Everything on planet Earth has a nationality. Everything. You must understand. So both the internal state has a pledge allegiance to the Empire Morocco as a person, and the Moors themselves as human beings have to pledge allegiance to the Empire Morocco. Constitution. You see? Let's continue. Okay, so your states are all about what? You need a government. Three branches government. So for the Empire Morocco is what? The Empire Morocco is the external sovereign, independent state. And who's head of state? The Sultan is head of state. Okay, well, who's head of government? The executive branch has a prime minister that oversees the government, okay? Then you got the legislative branch. You got the Speaker of the House that oversees the House members. Then you got your judicial branch. You got your Chief Judge that oversees all the other associate judges, right? So you got your three branches government, and then you got your head of state, alright? That's what all the Moors were missing. So you will also have this same type of tier structure within what? The internal states. The internal states, okay? Take for instance, go back to AMPAC, its constitution as an example. Within the Constitution of the Lodi and Morse Pradium, Antay Kalorano, which is the internal state, acronym is AMPAC, it also has three branches government, right? Executive branch, legislative branch, judicial branch. Okay? Alright, let's continue. Okay. So we're talking about what? What are we talking about right now? We're trying to decolonize. Well, how do we decolonize as Moors? First, we have to follow what? The instructions. It's all about what? Law. The Moors have to understand what's coming on as what? Substantive law, which is the rule of law of law. Then it's what? The procedure of law. Okay? So laws have rules itself. So you have the rule of law. And then you got what? The rule of procedure. So both of them have rules. You got the rule of law, number one. You got the rule of procedure, number two. And both are governed by what? The general rule of law. That's why you always hear states talking about the rule of law. So you got the rule of law, then you got the procedure of law. But there can be no procedure of law without understanding the law itself. Because the procedure is how you enforce said law. It must be steps involved, how you enforce the law. Because the law just can't enforce itself. It must have steps involved with it, you see? And Moors never understood the substantive law, and they never understood the procedure of said law. They never understood. They're all Moors treaties, because no one was telling them about the treaties. You see? Let's continue. So right now, the Moors are what you call Moors subjects in the treaties, right? The Treaty of Madrid refers to as a Moors subject. The Act of 1906 refers to as a Moors subject. And also the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of 1787 and 1836, Article 6, also refers to Moors as subjects. So it all really refers to Moors as subjects. You must understand that, alright? So the obligation of Moors subjects to do what? To return to Morocco and pledge allegiance to what? The state. That's the instructions of your treaties. That's the Treaty of what? Treaty of Madrid of July 3rd, 1880. Article 15, paragraph 1 says what? Any subject of Morocco that's been naturalized in a foreign country shall return to Morocco and choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire. And what is the empire? The empire is what? A state. The empire of Morocco, because Morocco as itself is what? A state. Right? That was the instructions of the treaty since 1880. Have the Moors done it? No, the Moors have not been pledging their allegiance back to the Empire Morocco. So we, as Moors, have delayed our own justice. You must always understand that. We've done this to ourselves. It's self-inflicted. So right now, um... The Moors subjects have to return to Morocco and follow the instructions of the treaties and pledge their allegiance to the Empire Morocco. And who's gonna assist the Moors with that? It's the WRC Trusteeship Council, okay? Which is a wiseregional council, which is a body, right? A diplomatic body of governors, but they're Moors, who have the status of trustee ship council that can assist them with their paperwork, their application, to start taking the steps towards being what? Recognized as what? A Moroccan national. You must be recognized by the state. You just can't declare your nationality. It doesn't work like that. You must fill out an application. That's law. That's law. When you're returning home, you're repatriating. You must repatriate, still fill out an application, so the state can recognize you. Right? Okay, let's continue. So the Moors, Moors subjects, will start to get assistance from the trustee ship council of the WRC, alright? So the Empire Morocco has a flag. It's the national flag, right, of the empire, not the kingdom of Morocco. But the Empire Morocco, that's a totally different legal personality. You got the Empire Morocco, King Morocco, two different distinct legal personalities. Two different nations, alright? Now, keep in mind, the flag, right, is what you call a circle seven flag. It has seven points of interest. Right? So what's the seven points of interest? Okay, let's go over it. Okay. So the top green stripe represents what? International law and treaties. The bottom green stripe represents what? Moroccan law. So you got international law, and you got what? Moroccan law. But Moroccan law is what you call what? Domestic law. That's your internal law of domestic laws. But international law is what? That's international. And then you got treaties. What are treaties? Treaties are what? A subject of international law. What governs treaties? International law. Right? Such as the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties of 1969. That's an international law resolution that governs all treaties, you see? So international law governs treaties. So treaties is a subject of international law. Then you got your internal laws, which is Moroccan law, you see? And then obviously, you got your five points of interest in the middle. You got love, truth, peace, freedom, and justice. But justice is the most important part, because when all else fails, what must prevail? Justice. Well, how do you enforce justice? It's through what? International law, treaties, and Moroccan law. See that? So international law, the green stripe up top, and then you got Moroccan law down here at the bottom, these two provide protections for the five principles. You see that? So it's seven points of interest, right? So circle seven flag, alright? That's what Moors have to understand. It's a circle seven flag. Let's continue. Now, the Moors know, um... We've been going over a case of the judge from the International Court of Justice in the case of Western Sahara of year 1975. And right now, we're on page 135. We'll pick it up in 135 again. Uh, this is the separate opinion, right? This is Western Sahara, 1975, separate opinion of Judge De Castro of Spain, alright? So we're gonna read some more about what Judge De Castro had to say. We're also gonna read a couple of paragraphs of some other judges today as well, alright? We'll switch it up a little bit, alright? So what should we understand today? Okay. Before we get started, as you can see, Judge De Castro is already talking about what? Legal ties. Right? Because he's trying to, he's talking about what? The Moors have to have a legal tie, legal ties with the territory. Because there's all the types of ties. You can have a personal tie, right? But when you're talking public law, right, which is what? Political tie. What's a political tie? That's a tie to the state. What's a territorial tie? That's a tie to the state. But if you have a personal tie, that's like a tie to what? A church. That's a tie to religion. That could be a tie to your spouse, like a marriage. But you have to know the distinction between what? Public law and private law, right? So before we get started reading about Judge De Castro, let's take it to the board. Alright. So let's get the proper, um, concept and context before we continue, alright? But we'll come back to this board. The board says, "The separation of church and state during decolonization in Morocco." Alright? That's what this is about. Decolonization, you must understand, in order for the Moors to decolonize, they must separate the church from the state, or they'll never be able to decolonize, never. Moors will be forever under colonialism if they do not separate the church from the state. And Moors are struggling with this. They really are. And if you don't know how to separate it, then my suggestion to you is go lay down and accept your colonial status. Accept the fact that you are a ward of the state. Because the whole world has moved on past religious corporations. The world now is saying it's all about state rights. That's the bottom line, whether you like it or not, it is what it is, because that is what? The rule of law now. State rights. So listen. The separation of church and state during decolonization where? In Morocco. Did it say, "The separation of church and state during decolonization in America"? No. What's the jurisdiction? Morocco. So therefore, we're in Morocco, and we're trying to decolonize Morocco, because Morocco's been what? Colonized. When you keep saying, "In America, in America," how can you decolonize America when America is the colonist? The Americans in the United States of America is the colonist state. We're talking jurisdiction. The jurisdiction is Morocco, and the jurisdiction is what? United States of America. So you got the Empire Morocco, United States of America. You got Moroccans and Americans. So you can't decolonize America, you gotta decolonize Morocco. That's the name on the treaty. Listen. So it's the separation of church and state during decolonization where? In Morocco. See, the parties must be known right off the top. Anytime you're reading the contract, you must know the party right off the top. Who are you talking about? Where are you talking about? Geographically speaking. What's the jurisdiction? What's the region? Off the top, when you're talking law, party names matter. In Morocco, alright? So okay, I got two columns, okay? Two different columns. This column right here is about the state. This column over here is about church. State is public law. Church is what? Private law, right? State is first in what? First in law. Church is second where? In law, because that's private. The state comes first, church comes second. Alright? Listen. So we continue to read the Western Sahara case, you have to make a distinction about these two columns as we continue to read. It's all about public law. So let's talk about the state. What is public law? Well, public law is the constitution of the state, right? Public law is what? Political tie to what? The state, right? You got a legal tie to the state, and then superior law is based on what? The state. Statutory law is based on what? The state. You got state government for what? The state. And then you're decolonized. You decolonized because you did what? You emerged as what? A sovereign, independent state. And now you're a national upset state, because you have a nationality, Moroccan. Because it's about what? In Morocco, for who? Moroccans. And last but not least, now you're free. Free of what? Colonialism. You're free to self-govern. The state now has authority and power to maintain its integrity of domains within the boundaries of its borderlines, you see? So everybody's free. The state is free of the Empire Morocco, and the Moors are free as Moroccans. Both the state and the people are free. You see? Because the state now becomes free. If the state is not free, then the people are not free. You see what I'm saying? That's public law. That's superior law. Okay, let's talk private law. Private law is the church, right? That's second. Private law, right, of the church, which is religion. People have constitutions of their churches, their bylaws of the church, but it's subordinate, right? So religious ties, you can have a religious tie to the church. You can have a legal tie to the church, because you might be the pastor of the church. That's a contract between the church and the pastor, the church and the minister. The church and the reverend have signed a contract, haven't they? Uh-huh. So that's a legal tie to the church. There can be beliefs. Churches are based in what? Belief. Religion is based in what? Belief. I didn't make that up. That's just the rule of law, correct? Yes. Private law is theocratic governments. What's a theocratic government? A religious order? A religious government that's subordinate to the state? Anybody you hear saying they got a theocratic government, that's private law. Must understand that. Anybody you hear say they got an ecclesiastical government, that's private law. It's subordinate to the state. Then you got what? Chateau. What's chateau? You're still chattel property if you're still part of the church. Because the church recognizes its members as who? Chateau. That's the truth. And the Moors know it. So if you're still under private law, you're still in what? Indentured serving. Because you're still what? Colonized. And you're still in the private law status. You're still colonized and naturalized. Therefore, you're an indentured servant to who? The colonial state. The administrative colonial state. Got you in indentured service status, because you working for your stepmom, instead of working for your biological mother. You must understand what's happening. Okay, now that we went through that, we'll come back to this, okay? Alright. Let's pick back up where Judge De Castro was talking. Keep in mind, Judge De Castro is from where? Spain, alright? Okay, uh, Brother Dre, uh... Let's pick it up from here. C.
C. Legal ties with the territory. The term "legal ties" is extraordinarily wide, whether one considers all the possible categories of ties or all the factors that could give those ties a legal character. Ties can arise from proximity, from a treaty, or from war. Or they can flow from an unlawful act on responsibility. There are territorial ties, personal ties, ties of sovereignty, servitude, suzannity, fealty, basilage, to say nothing of all that other ties of a feudal character. According to their legal source, they can be international, ties of public or private law, of state law, of canon law, or of Muslim law, based off of the Sharia.
Alright, so we learned in the previous classes that Judge De Castro immediately started talking about the legal ties of what? Territory. So when you're talking legal ties of territory, you're talking legal tie to what? The state. You see? He's making a distinction of all types of ties. But when he starts talking territory, he's really talking about what? State law. What's the state law? What's the first law of the state? Is what? Constitution, right? This is what the Moors have been in the absence of. The Moors have not had a state constitution. When you're in the absence of a state constitution, then you're stateless. Why do I say that? Because only the state can recognize your nationality. So if the Moors didn't have a state, then how is the state supposed to recognize your nationality? But instead, what the Moors do? They say, "Oh, we got a constitution of what? Our church." And our church recognized our nationality. This is what they're saying, which is what? It's arbitrary and capricious, right? Which means it has no standing in law. Churches can't recognize your nationality. The word "temple" is listed under what? Church. So a temple cannot recognize your nationality. It's patently frivolous and arbitrary and capricious, meaning it has no standing in law. The bottom line is what? You've been hoodwinked, bamboozled, and led astray. You've been hoodwinked, bamboozled, and led astray from your true nationality, because who can only recognize your nationality? Only the state. But the state of what? Morocco. So therefore, your nationality is what? Moroccan. You see? Alright, so listen. So Judge De Castro is breaking it down, right? So he starts talking about all these different types of ties, but he knows that the Moors have to have a legal tie. Why is he saying that? Okay, let's talk two parts. Number one, he's looking at the treaties. And when he's looking at the treaty, he's looking at them what? In arrears. He's looking at the timeframes. He said, "Okay, these treaties are from what?" Seventeen eighty-seven, eighteen thirty-six, right? He looking at the nineteen oh-six treaty, he looking at all types of treaties. So when, when judges look at treaties, they have to look at the concept and context to try to get into mindset, right, to look at the supplemental work of what went into actually drafting that treaty. What was going on between the two parties? So judges have to go back in arrears, right, and start to look at the treaty from a perspective as if they had to go back in time. But at the same time, the judges have to look at the Charter of the United Nations of nineteen forty-five to understand it's about state rights. The judges are bound to what? The rules of the court, the statutes of the court. And Article thirty-eight of the Statutes of the International Court of Justice says what? It's about international law and the rule of law for who? Civilized nations, and civilized nations must be a civilized state. So therefore, it must be a civilized state tie. So the, the state is tied to the territory, the territory is tied to the state. So the legal personality that the Moors have to pledge allegiance to is what? The state. And not the individual Sultan or any individual human being in general. So you gotta understand that judges are looking at these treaties in arrears, plus after nineteen forty-five is a timeline, they're looking at, okay, the Charter says it must be a political tie to the state, but these old treaties say people could also pledge allegiance to the leader under a religious status as well. So they're looking at what? Old law versus what? Contemporary law. So the judges are going back and forth, taking a look at this. So they have to look at the treaties as is, as if it's in the arrears of what was going on. But at the same time, they're, they're bound to the rules of the court and the statutes of the court to say people have to pledge allegiance to the state to be what? A civilized nation. So what are the judges looking at? They're looking at both sides of this equation. Listen to me. Did the Moors pledge allegiance to the state? Well, some of them did. Did the Moors pledge allegiance to the Sultan under a religious tie? Some of them did, under what? Moors would call themselves what? Muslims, right? That's what Moors were doing. It was Islam, right? It's Islamic religion. So Moors were doing both. They had, they had some form of political tie to their empire Morocco and the Sultan. And some of the Moors had a religious tie to the Sultan under, them, under Islam. So some of the judges are looking and say, "Well, eh, under contemporary law, these Moors gotta pledge allegiance to the state." In addition to that, the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, Paragraph one, said of the obligation of any subject of Morocco, "Any" is the key word. Any subject of Morocco that's been naturalized in a foreign country shall what? Return to Morocco, which that return to what? The state. Morocco's the state. Right? Then it says what? And then choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire. For what type of laws in the empire back in the day? It was, well, that's religious laws. But as more contemporary times started coming into play, because of the Charter of the United Nations, et cetera, everything became what? State ties. About the state law. So you see how the judges are kind of going back and forth, looking at these two columns? You see? Now, where does the separation start to begin? Is when Moors are trying to decolonize. As soon as Moors say they're trying to decolonize, guess what happens? Listen to me. And as soon as Moors say, "Well, we wanna decolonize," they say, "Okay, well, what? What gives you a right to decolonize?" You say, "Well, because the Charter of the United Nations said we can, under Articles seventy-three and seventy-four." You say, "Okay, you're invoking that law." Guess what? Under contemporary law, you gotta pledge allegiance to what? The state. So when you're trying to decolonize, that's the only way the Moors to get their sovereign rights back, you have to follow what? The substantive law of public law, as long as the procedure of law. It's the law and procedure. So if Moors want their rights back, i.e. they want their land back, they want their minerals back, they want their freedom, they have to follow what? Contemporary law of the Charter of the United Nations. So the African states have to pledge allegiance to what? The state. All the islanders have to pledge allegiance to what? The state. Why is that? Because that's contemporary international law. Therefore, that created what? A custom and usage. They created customary norm of international law that anyone decolonizing must, must pledge allegiance to the state. So when the Western Sahara Moors were trying to decolonize, they said, "Okay, are these Moors pledging allegiance to their state? Or they pledging allegiance to some religious head, figure?" You see? Some figurehead. Well, those Moors were trying to pledge allegiance to the state. We're gonna talk more about that today, alright? I'm gonna build up to that to talk about the Moors have political ties versus the Moors have religious ties. We're building up, alright? But understand, these two columns were coming into play when the judges were looking at it, okay? Always remember that. Well, soon you, soon as you invoke the word "decolonization," guess what happens? You immediately invoke what? The Charter of the United Nations of nineteen forty-five and all of this contemporary law. And contemporary laws, it must be an attachment to the state. You can only decolonize with the state. What, what's, but what's the second part to that? Because Moors are saying, "Well, why we gotta listen to the Charter of the United Nations?" Well, guess what? That came out in nineteen forty-five. Guess what came out first? The Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty. So you're talking about sixty-five years before the Charter of the United Nations even came out. The Treaty of Madrid came out first, July third of eighteen eighty. Article fifteen, Paragraph one, said the Moors had to have a political tie to the empire, which is the state. You must understand what's happening. So don't blame this on the charter members. Don't blame this on the United Nations. The Moors supposed to pledge allegiance to the state in eighteen eighty. And it was reaffirmed after nineteen forty-five. You gotta see what's happened. Let's continue. Okay, Brother Dre right here, go words.
The words, the legal ties between this territory and the Kingdom of Morocco indicate the category of ties, um, envisage, verniculum juris between a territory which is the object of the ties in question and a body public which is a state. That is, or what is involved is thus state ties relating to two specific areas, the Rio de Oro and the Sakhi, uh, Sakhi El Hamra.
Pause. So Judge De Castro is narrowing down the obligations of a legal tie. He said a legal tie, i.e. a political tie should technically be to what? The state. If you're trying to invoke what? Decolonization in the Charter of the United Nations as your legal argument, you see? You trying to decolonize, what law are you using? "Oh, I'm using the charter." Okay, that means what? You have to have a tie to state, not a tie to your religious corporation. This is Judge De Castro saying in nineteen seventy-five, keep this, keep that in mind. Reading here twenty twenty-four, October twenty twenty-four, here we go in twenty twenty-five. This was fifty years ago. Moors should be following instruction, understanding these things. Okay, so it's all about the state. What is involved is thus state tie. You see that? State ties. It's about the state ties. That's what Moors gotta understand. I'm emphasizing that for a reason, because Moors wanna decolonize. If you wanna decolonize, you must have a state tie. This is the judges are saying. Listen.
Their legal nature is made plain by the relation existing between the two questions. In the first question, the court was asked whether or not the territory had been a territory belonging to no one, um, sans baterre in the French text. The sex, uh, second question, supplementing the first, amounted to asking who, if the territory was not without a master, had been its master or owner at the time of colonization by Spain. Was it Morocco? Was it the Ma- uh, Martenian entity? The expression "legal ties" must be understood to mean state ties relating to the territory and capable of having the value of a legal title to lay claim to the territory. That is to say, a right of sovereignty over the territory.
Alright, so what are we learning here? So in the end, what, what did the judge say right here? We're gonna continue, continue reading. It says, what? It says, "The expression 'legal ties' must be understood to mean state ties relating to the territory and capable of having the value of legal title to lay claim to the territory." That is to say, a right of sovereignty, right, over the territory. So how do you get sovereignty technically over the territory? That's only have what? A state, because the state tied to the territory, you see? So in other words, you have to have a political tie, because, because political means what? The state. You're setting up the administration of what? The state. That's public law, right? So he's talking what? You must understand, he's talking political type of what? Legal tie. He's talking political type of legal tie. Listen, listen, he's talking a political type of legal tie. Listen. Risen indigenous people, right, two thousand and seven, you come down to Article five. This is what Moors gotta understand. Moors don't read, but we gotta read, gotta start reading, understand sequential order, okay? You have to put these in sequential order, okay? Alright, so in Article five. Article five, okay, Brother Joseph?
Article five. Indigenous peoples have the right to maintain and strengthen their distinct political, legal, economic, social, and cultural institutions while retaining their right to participate fully if they so choose in the political, economic, social, and cultural life of the state.
Alright, so Article five. Alright, so let's change the word indigenous people to who? Moroccan people. Moroccan people have the right to maintain and strengthen their distinct political, legal, economic, social, and cultural institutions while retaining their right to participate fully if they so choose. In the political, economic, social, and cultural life of what? The state. Now look. You see how it says distinct political? It's about what? You must have a distinct political tie. Political, then legal. See that? So Judge De Castro's talking, it's all types of legal ties. But do, what type of legal tie do you have? You have a political tie, because the political tie is tied to what? The state. You see it? State. Or you can have what? A legal tie to what? A church. That's private law. That's what the Moors' science temple is. It's private law, and a lot of Moors have a legal tie as a car-carrying member of the Moors' science temple, but that's not a political tie. There's all types of ties. This is what Judge De Castro is trying to tell the Moors in nineteen seventy-five. So you must have what? A political tie. Political. Now look, look at the wordplay. See down here? They said political again. See, political, they mentioned political again. You see what they're trying to tell the indigenous people? Trying to tell the Moroccans, yeah, there's all kinds of ties, legal ties, but you need a political tie. Matter of fact, let's say it again, you Moors need a political tie. Political, political, tied to what? The state. You see how they're talking to the Moors? But what did Moors do? Moors turned around and had what? A legal tie to what? Their churches. Moors are what? Baptist, Methodist, Jehovah's Witness, right? They're what? They some everything, right? Hebrew lights. Right? Moors' science temple is what? Moorish Americans for a religious corporation. It's a religious corporation. All the car-carrying members of that religious corporation are Moorish Americans. Therefore, Moorish Americans what? A religious status. It is not a nationality. So the world, the Moors, or should I say the world, has always known to keep these Moors in a legal tie to their churches. And never teach the Moors about they should have a political tie to what? The state. Even though the Risen indigenous people came out in two thousand and seven, and Barack Obama tried to tell the Moors to go read it, so you understand your political, political ties, a legal tie. What type of legal, legal tie? Political tie to the state. And the political tie to the state is also called what? Territorial tie. This is what Moors gotta understand. And then last but not least, Article six finally tells you what? Brother Joseph?
Article six. Every indigenous individual has the right to a nationality.
Why, why, why do they say this in Article six? It came after what? You're, once you have a political tie to the state, then the state can recognize what? Your nationality. You see that? Sequential order. Moors don't follow instructions. Barack, Barack Obama signed this for a reason. Rahm Emanuel, the mayor of Chicago back in like twenty twelve, he wrote a proclamation letter. He says, "All you Moors' rights are guaranteed in the Charter of the United Nations." Why'd he say that? Well, after Barack Obama signed the Risen indigenous people, Rahm Emanuel says, "Your rights are guaranteed in the charter." That's Article one. It's right there. Article one says the Charter of the United Nations, and Rahm Emanuel tried to tell the Moors, go read the Charter of the United Nations, because all your rights are guaranteed in that charter, because that's public law. International law falls under what? Public law. Rahm Emanuel was trying to tell you, you need to get out of your temple and get into a state tie. That's the legal tie you need. A political tie to what? The state. It's too easy. Listen. Going back to the judge. Judge De Castro, nineteen seventy-five, alright? Okay, let's continue reading from here. Morocco.
Uh, Morocco put the question thus, "Were the two territories of the Sahara, Rio de Oro and Sakhi El Hamra, at the moment of occupation under the sovereignty and administration of the Moroccan state? That corresponds to its assertions that the two provinces of Western Sahara fall under our sovereignty and that prior to Spanish colonization, Morocco had exercised sovereignty over those territories in accordance with the conditions laid down by public international law. In the draft resolution and during the debate in the fourth committee, the question retained the sense given to it by Morocco, hence the controversy originating in the threat to the principle of self-determination that a number of countries saw in the request for an advisory opinion. In the introduction to its written statement, Morocco maintained that since the eleventh century, Western Sahara had been under an effective authority and that such authority was that of Moroccan sovereignty. In its oral statements, it said that the only question which has arisen from our point of view is whether Morocco was sovereign in Western Sahara at the time of Spanish colonization and that at the time of colonization by Spain, the Kingdom of Morocco was being, was exercising its sovereignty in West Sahara on the hearing of, uh, twenty-fifth of July, being considered to be the memorial possessor of the territory at the hearing of third of July. Mauritania maintained for its part that the Sahara under Spanish administration was an integral part of the Mauritanian entity. In its written statement, it said, "The legal relationship between the two is a simple one of inclusion." In its oral statements, it spoke of a co-sovereignty of the different constituents of the Chingu, um, Chinguzi country, the hearing of ten of July. In the oral statements of Morocco, we find the assertion that the Moroccan state conforms to the traditional monarchical idea of personal allegiance, hearing of second of July. The bearing of this statement is not clear. The personal allegiance traditional in Morocco conferred rights over persons, not territories. The territory of the vassal is not directly subject to the overlord. It is subject to him only, only, uh, indirectly during the period of allegiance and that allegiance ends and must be renewed at the death of the Lord or the vassal. In the period of colonization by Spain, the sultans are masters to be, uh, are masters of the territory which falls de facto under their which falls de facto under their sovereignty and seek to become masters of the territories which they regard as belonging to them de jour in the Bledsiva. In any case, a territorial claim such as Morocco's claim to the territory of Western Sahara cannot be founded on a personal allegiance.
Pause. Alright, so Judge DeCastro is breaking it down. He said, well, these Moors needed what? Territorial tie to the state. They need a legal tie to public law and not private law. So his last sentence, he says what? He said, "The sultans are masters of the territory which falls de facto under their sovereignty and seek to become masters of territories which they regard as belonging to them de jour in the Bledsiva." In any case, a territorial claim such as Morocco's claim to the territory of Western Sahara cannot be founded on a personal allegiance. Meaning that the Moors, right, need to have allegiance to the state versus having allegiance directly to the Sultan. Now this is Judge DeCastro's opinion. Keep that in mind. Alright, so all these judges sitting around talking about, this is our opinion. So Judge DeCastro is over here on this side of the colony, like these Moors need a political tie to the state. Alright, now listen, let's continue to listen to Judge DeCastro. Listen. Okay, now we're gonna jump over to page one forty-eight, okay? We were, we started off on page one thirty-five. Now we're gonna jump over to page one forty-eight, alright? Judge DeCastro, now he's talking about what? Religious ties, you see that? Hey, now he's gonna say, first he talked about what? Reli- uh, tied to what? The territory. He said, legal tie to the territory. Now he's talking about what? Religious ties. But, but he is saying religious ties to the territory. He just says the religious ties, period, right? Okay, now listen, let's listen to what he has to say about religious ties. Now he's gonna start breaking that down a little bit. Okay, listen. Okay, Dre?
Religious ties, belonging to Dar al Islam is a powerful tie. The world of, the is, the, excuse me, the world of the Muslim believers is opposed to that of the unbelievers Dar al Harb in opposition which justifies the call for mutual help in case of a holy war jihad. It is a tie which is not to be confused with legal or political ties.
Alright, so here we go. Now he's separating religious tie from legal ties. So he's separating public law, the tie to state versus personal allegiance directly to the Sultan. Which falls on the church because you're talking religion, cause you're talking what? You're talking what? Islam. You see, right here, Islam. You're talking Islam. Now we're talking religion, right? You see right here, it says holy war. You're talking religion, right? Cause his title is what? Religious ties. He's talking religion. Okay, so the Moors are recognizing the Sultan under a religious tie, under what? Islam. And some of the Moors had direct ties to the state of, of the empire Morocco through contract and settlement, okay? But oftentimes, the Moors came under the umbrella of Islam, a religious type of order, right? But they was not recognizing the nationality. They were recognizing the religious tie under Islam, but Islam is not a nationality. Listen to me. Islam, the word Islam is not a nationality. So if you got a religious tie to Islam, that's not the nationality. Cause only states have the nationality to confer to people. Okay, but Islam is not a state. It's a religion. So if you got a religious tie to Islam, that means you're still what? Stateless. Cause you still have not identified the state that recognizes the religion of Islam. You following me? Now watch what the judge says about Islam. Here we go. Two religious ties. Belonging to Dar Islam is a powerful tie. See, he's talking tie. See how he broke that word tie on again? It's a powerful tie. Islam is a powerful tie to what? Religion. He's not talking state. Listen, belonging to Islam is a powerful tie. The world of the Muslim believers is opposed to that of the unbelievers. An opposition which justifies the call of mutual help in cases of a holy war jihad. Listen. It is a tie which is not to be confused with legal or political ties. I'll read again. Religious ties is a tie which is not to be confused with legal or political ties. I'll read it again. Because what is he trying to say? Listen to me. Must be a separation of church and state. The Moors have created a hybrid called what? Divine and national movement. That's right in the center. You're in the twilight zone. You gotta separate what? Church and state. This is the ICJ judge is saying. If you're gonna have a li- religious tie, that's fine. That's personal. But you should be having what? A public tie directly to the state. But Moors have done what? They created confusion. Truth is, truth and what? falsehood strangely mixed. You see what's happening? The Moors created something right in the middle, a hybrid. Gotta see what's happening here. Let's read it again. It's very important for Moors to understand how ICJ judges are looking at this. This is a judge's religious ties. Belonging to Islam is a powerful tie. The world of Muslim believers is opposed to that of the unbelievers. An opposition which justifies the call for mutual help in cases of a holy war. Religious tie, it is a tie which is not to be confused with legal or political ties. You see the word political? See that? Political ties is different from what? Religious ties. Let's go back to rights indigenous people. Rights indigenous people. Article Five, rights indigenous people, Article Five, talked about what? A political tie. About your political tie. Your political, your political, right? Political tied to what? The state. What are they trying to tell indigenous people? You need a tie to what? The state. You can still practice your religion, but that cannot, you cannot do what? You can't decolonize through a religious order. You can't confuse the two. You must separate what? Church and state. These are judges talking like this. Moors don't study. This case came out in nineteen seventy-five, fifty years ago. Why don't we know this? This is why I said in the previous class, I said the Moors have to understand it's a new era of time. About the nineteen forty-five, it's all about state rights, but what have Moors continued to do? They keep saying it's a divine and national movement. What is that? A hybrid? That's an antiquated mission statement. You gotta flip it. Not divine and national movement, it just needs to be what? A national and then maybe divine, cause divine is what? Second, it didn't mean you can't have a divinity. That's your personal contract with who? Your church. But you must lead with the state first. So it means state, then church. Well, what are Moors doing? Church, then state. This has been our problem? For decades. Barack Obama tried to tell the Moors, you need a political tie, cause they're talking about legal, but what type of legal tie? Political tie to what? The state. The state can claim what? The territory. That's what you're trying to do. When you're trying to decolonize, it's all about the state. The state is doing what? Okay, listen. Listen, let's go to Resolution fifteen forty-one of the United Nations. General Assembly Resolution fifteen forty-one, right? It's about the charter again. Ron Emanuel tried to tell you, go read the Charter of the United Nations. You go to Article seventy-three. Right, it's the enforcement of Article seventy-three, section E. Right, what date did this come out? Okay, what date? Came out in December fifteenth nineteen sixty. Right? Nineteen sixty. Sixty-five years ago. We're going on here twenty twenty-five. Listen, what choices it gave the Moors. It gave the Moors what? Three choices under what? Principle number six. Principle number six, it gave the Moors three choices under principle number six. If the Moors are trying to decolonize, principle number six gave the Moors one, two, three choices. And all three choices have something to do with what? The state, the state, and the state. Joseph, what is, what is choice number A? I'm listening.
A, emergence as a sovereign independent state.
What is B?
B, free association with an independent state.
What's three?
Or C, integration with an independent state.
So it's state, option one, state, option two, state, option three. Did it ever say church? Did it say temple? Did it say tribe? Did it say clan? Did it say sorority? Fraternity? None of them are, right? It always said what? State. Why? Cause that's public law. So after nineteen forty-five, the United Nations said, "We're gonna help indigenous people to put together laws that they can enforce," but the indigenous people have to understand it's all about what? The state. It's all about the state, state, state. These are only three options. It didn't say nothing about your rights are guaranteed through the Moor Science Temple of America. Did it say that? Did it say anything about the Moor Science Temple of America? No. Say anything about a temple? No. Now I know Moors are sensitive, but we gotta tell the truth. We ain't gonna do this truth and falsehood strangely mixed. No, we're done with that. You gotta separate what? Church and state. And right now, we're talking about state. They're trying to tell indigenous people, you gotta get away from the whole church thing if in fact you wanna decolonize, but then go to church on Friday. Go to church on Sunday. But the other six days of the week, you need to be focused on decolonization through the state. And you need what? What are they trying to tell the Moors? If in fact you're trying to decolonize, you need a what? This is principle number seven. Moors love the number seven. But what does principle number seven tell the Moors they needed? They needed what? A constitution. They're trying to decolonize. This is Resolution fifteen forty-one of nineteen sixty. Listen. What else you need? You need what? A state. State and what? Constitution. You need a state constitution. Did it say temple? No. Did it say tribe? No. Did it say clan? No. Did it say fraternity? No. Did it say sorority? No. Did it say lodge? No. Did it say prince hall? No. Did it say masons? No. Did it say Black Panthers? No. Saying you need a constitution of the state and not your constitutions of your privatized associations and charters. Listen, it's all about the constitution. The Moors need a state constitution. Let's go down here to principle nine. I mean, ten. That's principle ten. It's all about what? Constitution. Constitution of a state. Right? That was principle what? That's ten. Okay, let's go down. Principle what? Eleven. It's all about what? Constitution, 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 right? In case you didn't hear me the first time, constitution of what? The state. Right? Listen. This is all about what? What is this all about? Okay, let's go back up. Let's go back up. This is about what? Okay, it's all about principle one. Nova?
Principle one, the authors of the Charter of the United Nations had in mind that chapter eleven should be applicable to territories which were the known to be of the colonial type. An obligation exists to transmit information under Article seventy-three of the Charter in respect of such territories whose peoples have not yet attained a full measure of self-government.
Alright, so Resolution fifteen forty-one of nineteen sixty is all about colonial type territories. So if you're living in a colonial territory like the Moors who are living in the belly of the United States of America, the United States of America is a colonial state. You need to be using what? Colonial type of laws in order to decolonize. So if you're using colonial type, if you're trying to get rid of the colonial state, right, then you need what? You gotta follow the instructions. And the Moors are supposed to do what? Choose one of these three. Principle six. It says, Moors have emerged as a sovereign independent state. Or it says, the Moors have to be one, the free association with an independent state, or C, integration with an independent state. Those are your only three choices under decolonization. And all three of these require what? A state constitution. Right? So now, NPAC, NPAC has what? A state constitution as an internal Moors state for following instructions. And the empire itself is the what? The country, i.e. the mother state, the national state that oversees all Moorish states. It's the constitution for the empire Morocco, we're following instructions. Let's get back over to the judge. Listen, we're talking ties. Listen, let's see what Great Britain said. This is Judge DeCastro. Okay, what page are we on now? What page are we on now? This is the Western Sahara. Right, Western Sahara, separate opinion of Judge DeCastro, page one sixty-two, okay? Let's see what Great Britain was saying, okay? Alright, here we go. Uh, brother Dre?
The British authorities, while affirming that their government wished to uphold the integrity of the Sultan's possessions, retorted that the furthest boundary of Morocco's territory had always been at the Wadan Al. That Moroccan control in, in the Suez itself was very feeble and that it was absurd to confuse religious authority with political authority.
Pause. Article eight, the British.
The British authorities, while affirming that their government wished to uphold the integrity of the Sultan's possessions, retorted that the furthest boundary of Morocco's territory had always been at the Wadan Al. That Moroccan control in the Suez itself was very feeble and that it was absurd to confuse religious authority with political authority.
Pause. So what's happening? Great Britain's separation what? Doing the separation of what? Church and state. Cause they said what? It is absurd to confuse religious authority with political authority. You see that? Absurd. To intermix church and state. This is what Great Britain is saying. So if the Moors are trying to decolonize, they say, oh, we, we got a right to our sovereign rights as what? Moor Science Temple. Guess what? Moor Science Temple will get laughed out the room because Great Britain is saying, it's absurd to confuse church and state. You know, the ICJ would tell the Moor Science Temple if they're trying to make a claim to sovereignty, it's absurd to do what? Intermix church and state. This is being discussed at the ICJ fifty years ago. Why don't the Moors know this? Why haven't they changed their slogan by now? Why is it still divine and national movements? Because the FBI is still involved. The FBI is involved in the temple and the FBI is involved in the civic Moors movement as well. All these Moors talking about they got a civic organization. Yeah, the FBI is involved with that too to keep you from understanding. You had a pledge allegiance to the state. You see what I'm saying? So RB Bay Publications, Roz Mariah Bay and Taj Vee Bay and Kujo Ill keep trying to tell you, all you gotta do is declare your nationality and get some frivolous paperwork from RB Bay Publications and order some nationality cards and turn around and say, you're what? The true American. The reality is, you're the true Moroccan. You see what's happening? We're being sold out. And, and on top of that, everybody keeps intermixing what? Church and state. They creating a hybrid, a Frankenstein. They create what? Something that cannot be enforced by law. Moors been going to jail by the thousands because they keep trying to enforce something that's unenforceable. It's absurd to intermix church and state and claim it's being law. Read again, brother Dre, from here.
The British, the British authorities, while The British authorities, while affirming that their government wished to uphold the integrity of the Sultan's possessions.
Pause. Whose possessions?
The Sultan.
Why don't the Grand Sheiks talk about the Sultan? Reason why is because Grand Sheiks work for the FBI, that's why. That's an allegation. Allegedly. But you must understand, that's called circumstantial evidence and not direct evidence. What's the circumstantial evidence? That the Moor Science Temple keep trying to tell you that you're the true American. The Grand Sheiks of the civic organizations keep saying, you're the true Americans, and they keep trying to tell you to intermix what? Church and state. Circumstantial evidence saying, hmm, somebody keeping these Moors off the right path of law. What type of law? Public law. What type of law? State. Right? State law, which is superior law. They got the Moors over here under religion. You see? Now, I know Moors are sensitive, but we keeping it real. I'm reading what the judges are saying. I'm reading what Great Britain is saying. So ICJ. From the top, Brother.
The British authorities, while affirming that their government wished to uphold the integrity of the Sultan's possessions, retorted that the furthest boundary of Morocco's territory had always been at the what now? That Moroccan control in the Suez itself was very feeble and that it was absurd to confuse religious authority with political authority.
Pause. So you cannot confuse religious authority with political authority? Wait, timeout. There's that word political again. Is this just a coincidence? Let's go to the rights indigenous people that Barack Obama signed for the Moors, but then the Moors turn around and told you to enforce the constitution of the United States instead of enforcing your own state constitution through the empire Morocco. So Article five says, you need a political tie to the state. You see that? Article five. Okay, you go back to the judge, listen. The judge is talking about what? A political authority. You see that? Versus what? Religious authority. You see that? Distinct. Religious authority, political authority. And Great Britain said it's absurd to do what? Intermix the two. It creates what? Ambiguities, a gray area which cannot be enforced, i.e. the twilight zone. Moors are stuck in a halfway house. You gotta complete the journey from getting out the temple and coming to pledge your allegiance to the state. This is what the ICJ judge is saying. This is what Great Britain is saying, and this is what the United States of America is always knowing about the Moors. The United States of America is that keep these Moors over here in the church. Keep black people in their Baptist church and keep Moors in their temples. On this side. You gotta see what's happening. Let's continue to read.
As proof of the latter argument, they pointed out that the name of the Sultan of Turkey was men- was mentioned in prayer by Muslims throughout Asia and Africa who were not and never could be considered Turkish subjects. Information adopted was supplied by the Spanish government, annex twenty, pages eighteen through twenty-nine. It is also important to note the restricted validity that the powers concerned attributed to the eighteen ninety-five agreement. The French government endeavored to persuade the Moorish government that the agreement must be against Morocco's own interest in that clause two should be interpreted as referring to Cape Jubilee itself and not to the rest of the coastline and hinterland.
Pause. All right. So it says right here. It is also important to note that the restricted validity that the powers concerned attributed to the eighteen ninety-five agreement, they're talking about an old treaty, eighteen ninety-five. The French government endeavored to persuade the Moorish government. We're talking Moors. You see how France refers to you and your proper status? France, they refer to you by the tribal name. Why? Because in the treaty, they call you what? A Moor. In the treaty, call you what? Moorish government. In the treaty, call you what? Subject. In the treaty, call you what? Moroccan. Call you Moroccan in the treaty. So France refers to you as Moroccan. I'm gonna point it out again, this is France, okay? The French government. See? So we just finished talking about Great Britain, right? Now here comes France. And France is talking about the Moorish government in the Western Sahara case. So, the French government endeavored to persuade the Moorish government that the agreement might be against Morocco's own interest and that the clause two should be interpreted as referring to Cape Jubilee itself and not to the rest of the coastline and hinterland. Now, I won't get into interpretation act because it's talking about eighteen ninety-five from up stuff. What did I want to show you really here? That, that France is talking about the Moorish government in the year nineteen seventy-five. Why aren't the Moors talking about this case since Great Britain's talking about it in nineteen seventy-five? Why aren't the Moors talking about this case if France is talking about it in nineteen seventy-five? Now, let me say this. The King of Morocco is a party and is a vibrant king, isn't that correct? So therefore, the kings of the King Morocco noted, everybody in this, this conversation talking about who? The Moors. So the King Morocco knows in nineteen seventy-five, the word Moor was still relevant, but the King Morocco don't ever talk about Moors. You gotta see what's happening. Everybody knows about the Moors, they're keeping it secret, but the judges are going to expose it. Why? Because that's their job, they're honorable. But yet, the Europeans are still talking about the Moors, even the year nineteen seventy-five. You gotta see what's happening, man. Ain't nobody telling us about these treaties. Nobody's telling us about these case laws of the ICJ. Why aren't the Grand Sheiks telling us to read the Western Sahara that talks about Moors? Why aren't the Grand Sheiks telling us about France versus United States of America, the ICJ of nineteen fifty-two, that talked about Moors? You gotta start asking questions. I'm talking to the Moor students. Why aren't you asking your Grand Sheiks? Why aren't they teaching you this? Let's continue. Let's see what another judge has to say. This is still the Western Sahara, nineteen seventy-five. All right? This is decision by Gros, G-R-O-S. This is the French judge in nineteen seventy-five. This is France's judge talking, they're sitting on the bench. All right? This is France's judge. Nineteen seventy-five, Western Sahara case. Now we're on page what? Seventy-six. Because we switched to the different opinion. So I need the Moors to go get the advisory opinion of Judge Gros and read it, go to page seventy-six. And this is what you'll see. Listen. I'm gonna show you first. Look what France judge already admitted in nineteen seventy-five. A hundred and seventy-three Moorish tribes was in the Western Sahara. I'll say it again, it was a hundred and seventy-three Moorish tribes in the Western Sahara. They're talking about Moors out loud. While simultaneously domestically within the territories of France, Germany, Great Britain, United States of America, Canada, et cetera, you say you're Moor, they act like they don't know what you're talking about. You know why? Because the word Moor is a generic word. Why do I say the word Moor is a generic word? Because you cannot invoke your rights just by saying the word Moor. You must be what? Moroccan. Well, who has to say you're Moroccan? The empire Morocco, the state has to recognize you as Moroccan. So when you turn around and tell them you're a Moor, it means nothing to them because they know you did not follow the instructions to pledge your allegiance to the empire of Morocco. Therefore, they can ignore you because they still recognize you as what? Any subject of Morocco that's been naturalized in a foreign country. You're naturalized. So when you turn around and tell them you're a Moor, they say, no, you're not. You got the nationality of our colonial state. You're American, you're Canadian, you're French, you're German, you're Irish. You're not Moroccan. Because your Moroccan state don't recognize you. Your Moroccan state was in a shallow grave, so how you got the audacity to call yourself a Moor or Moroccan when the Moroccan state didn't recognize you? There hasn't been a Sultan since nineteen fifty-six. The empire Morocco's been in a shallow grave like Excalibur stuck in a stone. And you run around talking about you're a Moor. Well, that sounds good. I can appreciate the sentiment, but did you follow the instructions and pledge allegiance to the state? That's the question. And the answer, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time is what? No. And the Europeans know it. You know how they know it? Because they can go to the United Nations under Article one oh two, the Secretariat, the Moors have to deposit the empire Morocco's constitution with the United Nations Secretary under Article one oh two. So all of the member states of the General Assembly of the United Nations would know when Moors have deposited their constitution with the Assembly members. So they know all these years, the Moors have been ignoring the Charter of the United Nations. Moorish Americans don't talk about the Charter of the United Nations. They don't read its one hundred and eleven articles. So Moors have not been depositing a constitution for what name? Empire Morocco. If they did try to send a constitution, what was the name on it? Moor Science Temple of America? Wrong party name. If they did send a constitution, what name was on it? Oh, we got, uh, the Constitution of United States of America Republic. Nope, wrong answer. That's a charter, privatized charter. Plus, that's identity theft. You can't claim to be the United States of America at the same time the United States of America is claiming to be the United States of America. That's identity theft. Moors don't know what the hell they're talking about. And it's sad. Okay, I'm showing you right here. France's judge in nineteen seventy-five because the United Nations General Assembly members sent a team out to Western Sahara to count how many tribes they could identify. So the General Assembly members, ever since nineteen seventy-five, they know all about the Moors. Especially in the Western Sahara, but they know the Moors are all throughout the empire of Morocco. But they're just specifically talking about one small geographical location had one hundred and seventy-three Moorish tribes. Let's read it from the top. Okay, let's start with, uh, right here, as you can see, it's, it's the Sahara Desert, right? Sahara Desert. We're gonna read the highlighted area, we're gonna move on. Nova.
The relation between the territory and human beings was affected by these aspects and the organization of the populations of the desert reflects the special conditions of life. Caravans, the quest for pastures, oaths, oasis, defense or conquest, protection and submission between tribes with regard to which testimony produced to the court and not disputed was to the effect that in modern times, there are a hundred and seventy-three Moorish tribes. Since the court was unable to carry out any specific research, it is vain to make generalizations in the absence of any reliable data on the lines that there was allegiance, end quotes, between the emperor of Morocco and, end quotes, some of the nomadic tribes.
You see that? So the question, okay, yeah, there was some, some of the Moors pledged allegiance to the emperor of Morocco, i.e. the Sultan. But some of the tribes did not. Why are they highlighting this one hundred and seventy-three Moorish tribes? You know what they're saying? Some of the tribes pledged allegiance to the Sultan. Some did not. But what are they really saying? The Moors have all one hundred and seventy-three tribes. What does that mean? Think about it. There wasn't pledge, pledged allegiance to the empire Morocco as what? The national state. The national state is empire Morocco. All other internal states and tribes come underneath the what? National state. The Moors gotta stop saying they got tribes because in contemporary international law, you gotta say you got one hundred and seventy-three Moorish internal states. Because they don't recognize tribes as being what? Civilized nations. Because civilized nation was where nation mean. Talking states, you're talking countries. Listen. Talking states, you're talking countries. Listen. What's a nation? So when the, when the United Nations, uh, when they utilizing the, the statues of the International Court of Justice, Article thirty-eight says about civilized nations. But what's a nation? Okay, Nova.
Nation is a noun, a country considered as a body of people united by common descent, history, culture, or language, inhabiting a particular area or territory. Similar words are country, state, land, nation-state, kingdom, empire.
You see that? So the Moors, one hundred and seventy-three tribes have to recognize a mother nation instead of all them being separatism of one hundred and seventy-three tribes. All one hundred and seventy-three tribes need to come together and recognize the mother state that governs over the one hundred and seventy-three Moorish tribes. Their tribe needs to be converted to the word what? State. What type of state? Internal state. They recognize what? The external mother state called what? The empire Morocco. So you see the word nation? Nation is assessed to the word what? Country. See that? It's a country. Sometimes they use the word state. Right? Right?
Right.
Okay, listen. Nation, but it uses the word country. So a nation is a country. A country is a nation. But what does it say? It says, considered as a body of people, whole body, united by common descent, history, culture, or language inhabiting a particular area or territory. So all those one hundred and seventy-three tribes need to come together and recognize the mother state. Now listen. Country, 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 nation, nation, country. Listen. Under definition of empire. Nova.
Empire is also a noun. One, an extensive group of states or countries under a single supreme authority, an emperor or empress.
So emperor is a noun, it's an extensive group of states, plural, or countries, plural, under a single, singular supreme authority. And who's the authority? The emperor. Who's the emperor? The Sultan. So those one hundred and seventy-three Moorish tribes, right? Should have been referred to themselves as one hundred and seventy-three states, small little states, right? Under a single supreme authority. Listen. It's the emperor, right? Emperor what? Morocco. Now watch this, I'm gonna title the word Emperor Morocco, right? To the empire Morocco, then we're gonna look up this word single. You see how I got a highlighted? See that big giant single? Listen. I wanna show you something. Single, single, single supreme authority. Who's the supreme authority? The emperor. Emperor what? Morocco. Listen. Because we're still talking separation of church and state. In eighteen thirty-six, Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Treaty of Peace and Friendship recognizes who? The emperor. Of what? Morocco. Who's the emperor? That's the single authority. Of what? The empire. So emperor oversees what? The empire. Of what? Morocco. You see that? You see that? Okay, now listen. Listen. This is the case of France versus United States of America. Stay with me. Stay with me, be patient. Nova from the top.
International Court of Justice reports of judgments, advisory opinions, and orders case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. France versus United States of America, the judgment of August twenty-seventh of nineteen fifty-two.
All right, so this case, ICJ case, case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. So the United States of Americas in Morocco. This case was between France versus United States of America, right? Judgment of August twenty-seven, nineteen fifty-two. So France is in Morocco, and the United States of America is in Morocco. You got three different nationalities there, do you see it? So what's the first nationality? Well, you're talking about the Americans, but the Americans are the nationality of what? The United States of America for Americans. Then you got Morocco, what's the nationality of people in Morocco? Moroccans. Then you got France. People of France, what's their nationality? French. So you got the French, Moroccans, and Americans. Three different nationalities. Right? But the United States of America recognizes Morocco as what? What do they recognize it as being even in nineteen fifty two? Okay, listen. In the judgment, you go to page one ninety two. Right? In the judgment, you go to page one ninety two. Page one ninety two, the judgment, right? And look what it says in the title. U.S. Nationals in Morocco. This is ICJ writing this. It says, United States nationals are in Morocco. So that means the United States is in Morocco. And the United States citizens, i.e. the nationals, are also in Morocco. You see that? So ICJ ruling. Substantive law, evidence, case law. Listen. What does the United States consider Morocco to be on this page? Okay, Brother Joseph?
The United States, which still treats Morocco as a single country.
Pause, read it again.
The United States, which still treats Morocco as a single country.
Pause, read it again.
The United States, which still treats Morocco as a single country.
Well, wait a minute, so Morocco, United States still recognizes Morocco in nineteen fifty two as a single country? Single country, well, where do we see that definition? Oh, okay. Let's go back to empire. Let's go back to empire. Nova.
Empire is a noun, one, an extensive group of states or countries under a single supreme authority, an emperor or empress.
So the United States of America recognizes Morocco as what? A single, single, single country. A single what? Country. And all countries and states come under the single supreme authority of the empire. So the United States of America, given the case of France versus United States of America, is recognizing, is recognizing. Says right here again, the United States, which still treats Morocco as a single country. And that single country is the empire. And the empire oversees what? An ex, what? Extensive group of states or countries under a single supreme authority. So who has the supreme authority? Morocco. Morocco has a supreme authority. Did it say the Moore Science Temple? No. Right? Let's read it again, please correct me if I'm wrong. It says, the United States was still treats Morocco as a single country. So Morocco is not a temple, is it? No, it's a country. You see? So you gotta understand what we have to study. There's a reason why the grand sheiks don't want you to know about this type of information. Cause then you'll be trying to figure out, how do we get our rights back in Morocco? But instead, the grand sheiks keep trying to tell you, you're where? In America. But even the United States recognizes the Empire Morocco as the single country. That's the empire that oversees the United States of America, cause the United States of America located where? So let's read this again. The United States was still treats Morocco as a single country, and the United States is located where? Let's go to the top. What's the heading? What's the heading? All right. There we go. Nova.
Case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. France versus the United States of America, judgment of August twenty seventh of nineteen fifty two.
All right, so the United States of America is in Morocco, and they signed off on this case. They signed it nineteen fifty two, making it binding. You'll never, ever, ever see the United States of America arguing the fact that they're not in Morocco. I challenge anybody to go try to find any international correspondence where the United States of America is arguing that they're not in Morocco. They always say they're in Morocco. All the European states keep talking about they're in Morocco. This is nineteen fifty two. How many years ago was this? About seventy five years ago. Why aren't the Moors talking about it? You see what's happening? We're being sold out. Listen. We're still talking about separation church and state. So therefore, the Moors have to come back to the state, commonly known as Morocco, cause even the United States of America said in Morocco. So why aren't the Moors saying they're in Morocco? They're saying they're in America. Listen. Here's another judge. In the same case, Western Sahara. Separate opinion of Judge Amun. Okay, Amun, on page ninety eight. Now Judge Amun is from Lebanon. So it's Amon, Amon, Amun, Amon, from Lebanon. Page ninety eight of his opinion. And he's talking about what? The Moors. He's talking about the Moors. It's another judge. Talking about Moors. Why haven't the grand sheiks told the Moors about the Western Sahara case that came out in nineteen seventy five? If they keep talking about Moors? You know why they don't tell you? Because the stars tell you that you can't, you gotta separate what? Church from state. That's why they don't tell you. Cause the FBI want all the Moors stuck in what? The church. So why the grand sheiks don't talk about these cases? Okay, listen, we're gonna read the highlighted area. Nova.
Western Sahara's separate opinion from Amun on page ninety eight. Dominich on page thirty three of the work already quoted writes that the Moors considered that their ties with the Sultan of Morocco were so close that when the French troop arrived on the confines of Mauritania and the Houth, the threatened troops requested help and assistance from Moulay Abdul Aziz, the king of Morocco, who had claimed those regions as coming under his sovereignty. The Sultan, who succeeded him, sent his own uncle Moulay Idris with arms and munitions to support the holy war against the French, whom he besieged at Tijia.
Mm-hmm, all right. So right here, France, right, in this, in this case, a separate opinion by this particular judge in Lebanon. He's talking about the Moors as well. You see? He says, Dominich on page thirty three of the work already quoted writes, quote, writes, that the Moors considered that their ties with the Sultan of Morocco were so close that when the French troops arrived on the confines of Mauritania and the Houth, that, that threatened troops requested help and assistance from Moulay Abdul Aziz, the king of Morocco, who had claimed those regions as coming under his sovereignty. The Sultan, who succeeded him, sent his own uncle Moulay Idris with arms and munitions to support the holy war against the French, whom he besieged at the Tijia. What's important here to note? It's all about who again? Who they keep talking about? Who are they keep talking about? The Sultan of Morocco and who? The Moors. You see how they keep tying the Moors in with the Sultan? You see? You can't talk about the Moors without talking about the Sultan. You can't talk about the Sultan without talking about the Moors. My question to the grand sheiks is, why don't you talk about the Sultan? You see how they keep trying to cut out the Sultan? Cause if you talk about the Sultan, you gotta talk about what? The Empire Morocco. You talk about the Empire Morocco, then you gotta talk about what? The state. If you start talking about the state, then you have to start talking about all the treaties of the Empire Morocco that says you have to make a separation between church and state because Moors have to pledge allegiance to the state according to what? The Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty. Article fifteen, paragraph one, it says, any subject of Morocco who's been naturalized in a foreign country shall return to Morocco and choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire of Morocco. And the only way you can do that, you have to have what? In, in nineteen forty five, what did the Moors need? The Moors needed a constitution for the Empire Morocco that recognized what? Okay, listen. They recognize what? The head of state is who? Who's the head of state for the Empire Morocco? It's the Sultan. And you gotta put together three verses of government, right? Cause you need a constitution. We learned in Resolution fifteen forty one of nineteen sixty. In order to decolonize, you need a constitution. It kept saying constitution, constitution, constitution of what? The state. The judges are talking about this political tie versus the religious tie. They say it's absurd to try to intermix the two. You must know the distinction between what? Church and state, but it's all about the state. However, if you have a title in church, that's fine, that's a political tie, but you won't be able to do what? Decolonize. You see what's happening? This is what Moors gotta understand. All right? Listen. All right. So start to close out. What do I have up here? Is a universal declaration of human rights. The Moors love to talk about human rights. The Moors love to invoke the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, cause they go right up to what? Article fifteen, it says what? I have a right to a nationality. Right? But they never read even the preamble. The first page of the contract is the preamble. Moors skip right over. The preamble will tell you what type of tie you need to have in order to enforce Article fifteen to have a right to nationality. Cause who is the only person can recognize your nationality? The state. I.e. the country. Okay, listen. Preamble from the top. Uh, Brother Dre.
Preamble. Whereas recognition of the inherent dignity and of the equal and inalienable rights of all members of the human family is the foundation of freedom, justice, and peace in the world. Whereas disregard and contempt for human rights have resulted in barbarous acts which have outraged the conscience of mankind and the advent of a world in which human beings shall enjoy freedom of speech and belief and freedom from fear and want has been proclaimed as the highest aspiration of the common people. Whereas it is essential, if man is not to be compelled to have recourse as a last resort to rebellion against tyranny and oppression, that human rights should be protected by the rule of law. Whereas it is essential to promote the development of friendly relations between nations.
Pause. So the rule of law, right? The rule of law is enforced by who? Nations. Who enforces the law? The state, the state invokes laws. And it forces the laws. So right in the preamble, it's mentioning human rights is protected by what? The rule of law, but who enforces the rule of law? The nations. So it says, whereas it is essential to promote the development of friendly relations between nations. We look up the definition of nation, it represents what? The country, i.e. the state. Moors, you scream out loud, I have a right to my human rights. Okay, where's your states? You gotta read the preamble, it's telling you who has to invoke your rights for you, on behalf of you, or who can you take your grievances to? You must take your grievances to the state. Or the state has to take your grievances to a world stage on your behalf cause another state might be violating the human rights of another state. But it's a state on state dispute. Or it's a state on state relationship. Read it again. Whereas it is essential to promote the development of friendly relations between nations. It's between who? Nations. That's the party. So who's enforcing the rule of law? Who's enforcing the rule of law? The rule of law is enforced by who? Nations, or who are nations? Listen. Who are nations? A nation's what? A country. Who are nations? Okay, the nations are what? Country, state, nation, state. The nation's what? Kingdom, empire. Did it say temple? Did it say church? You see what's happening? Moors been trying to enforce the human rights, but they don't even read the preamble to learn that the nation is all about the nation what? The nation, state. But it must be an actual state that has a what? State, state constitution. And all the Moors have to pledge allegiance to said state. But what's the name of the state? Morocco. And they haven't done that. They're pledging allegiance to a temple. Or they're pledging allegiance to some privatized corporation called a great seal. Or they're pledging allegiance to Araby publication, cause that's where they're getting their documentation to. You gotta see what's happening. People are pledging allegiance as potentates. Listen. So the nation is about what? Countries. But countries are also what? States. Listen. Rights and conditions, people, listen. So it's all about nations. The nation is maintaining the rule of law. But Moors run around talking about, they're violating my rights. Well, what rights? Tell me the, the laws you're invoking. Tell me the state that can protect your rights. What's the name of the state? You see what's happening? The states protect your rights. The Moors are stateless. Why? Cause they keep saying they're not citizens of the United States. Okay, if you're not a citizen of the United States, that's cool, then tell me what state recognized you then? Now that you left the United States jurisdiction, what state recognized you as one of their own? Then they run you that game and say, oh, the temple is a state. You see what's happening? And what did Great Britain say? It's absurd. France is saying it's absurd. The judges are saying it's absurd. This is why the grand sheiks don't read these cases out loud, because then what are they gonna tell their congregation when they start reading these treaties out loud? And they're trying to tell their congregation that, uh, yeah, you gotta pledge allegiance to the temple. And then at the same time, if they was reading these treaties and ICJ case balls out loud, their congregation said, well, right here it says, uh, we gotta pledge allegiance to the state. Oh, don't worry about that, my brother, the temple is a state. Oh, really? Can you show me some evidence of that? No. Oh, just believe me, brother. It's all a belief. Now do you understand when Moors go to court and they get their teeth kicked in? Why the courts keep saying Moors are putting things on the record based in what? Their belief. All the judges keep trying to tell the Moors, all your documents, your riches and affidavits are patently frivolous, arbitrary, and capricious, cause they're based in what? What? Belief. Based in belief. Cause they have no what? Standing in law. Cause it's arbitrary, capricious. Gotta see what's happening. Why? Because Moors are stateless when they say they're not a citizen of the United States. And the United States says, well, that's patently frivolous, because you are definitely a citizen of the United States. You know how they can prove it? They lock your behind up, you get what? Three to five. Okay, rest of the preamble, so start to close out. Let's continue. Whereas.
Whereas the peoples of the United Nations have in the Charter reaffirmed their faith in fundamental human rights.
Pause. Read it again.
Whereas the peoples of the United Nations.
Pause, what is United Nations? United what? Countries, United what? States. It's United States. United States. United countries. Not United temples. Not United Masonic lodges. You gotta see what's happening here. Moors don't read the preamble, that's the first page of what? The contract. The parties must be known, if you're gonna invoke this as a contract, cause you says your rights, then your rights are derived through what? The state. Cause who wrote this contract? Members of what? States. Plural, cause it's the United Nations. Plural. So the United States, countries came together to write this contract. So you can only invoke your rights through the state. And Moors are stateless, if they're claiming they're not a citizen of the United States, then you're stateless. You have no rights. And to a state recognizing you, and then the state would extend you rights. And this is why Moors have to pledge allegiance to the Empire Morocco, so they get what? State rights. Of what? Human rights. Cause the state protects your human rights. Continue from the top.
Whereas the peoples of the United Nations have in the Charter reaffirmed their faith in fundamental human rights in the dignity and worth of the human, of the human person and in the equal rights of men and women, and who have determined to promote social progress and better standards of life and larger freedom. Whereas member states have pledged themselves to achieve in cooperation with the United Nations the promotion of universal respect for and observance of human rights and fundamental freedoms.
Pause, so who's, who's observing your rights? It says, whereas member states. The states are observing your rights. When you say you're not a citizen of the United States, and I asked you the question, what state did you pledge allegiance to? I'm talking to the Moors. They can't answer that question, cause soon as they say, the, 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 the temple, you say, wrong. They can't answer that question, cause soon they say, the temple, you say, wrong answer. Wrong answer. Soon you strike that off the list, you say, okay, try again. And after that, they toast. They don't know where to go from there. Why? Cause the Moors have been hoodwinked, bamboozled, and led astray by their teachers. You've been lied to, you've been deceived, and you need to admit it. Look in the mirror and say to yourself, that what? I've been in fellowship and worship, and I have not been in scholarship. You didn't do the research. Tell the truth, I'm talking to the Moors out there. How many of y'all read the dang on preamble? Raise your hand. Nobody? One out of one hundred, maybe? You know why? What is the teaching? How are Moors taught? They say, oh, man, go to what? The Universal Declaration, go to what? Article fifteen. So guess what Moors do? They follow that instruction. They jump straight to Article fifteen. They skip over the preamble. And the party's supposed to mean, no, that's the first page of the contract, tells you about state rights. Your human rights is protected by the state. It's by the what? State. We've been misled. Continue.
Whereas a common understanding of these rights and freedoms is of the greatest importance for the full realization of this pledge. Now, therefore, the General Assembly
Pause. Alright, so that's gonna be the end of the reading right there. So the state, right, the state must enforce your what? Universal declarations of human rights, right? Your universal declaration. Well, who's making the declaration on your behalf? The state makes declarations. Not individuals, but the state can only make the declaration. Who specifically of the state is the head of state? Or whoever is what? Designated to make the declaration on behalf of said state. The Moors run around and they're being taught what? Oh, you just declared your nationality all by yourself. Uh-uh. Only the state can do that for you. It's state rights. So Moors gotta understand. So as I start to close out, what do we have to understand? Alright. It must be a separation of church and state, cause it's all about state rights, not church rights. So it's a separation of church and state during decolonization in Morocco, cause if you're trying to decolonize, you have to follow the instructions of what? Decolonization, which is enforcement of what? State rights for who? Civilized nations. And civilized nations have what? Public law, and they have a constitution of a state. It's state constitution. Then we see that in Resolution fifteen forty-one of nineteen sixty, it says about the what? The state constitution. Isn't that what it said? So then what's happened, what? A political tie. But there's all kinds of legal ties. But what kind of tie in Article five or the Declaration of indigenous people, the rights of indigenous people, it says you have to have what type of legal tie? Political tie. You see what's happening? There's all type of legal ties. Right? Cause on this side of the equation, it says what? Legal ties. But that's legal tied to what? Religion. You must have a legal tie to what? Political. And politicals are tied to what? The state, cause the state represents public law. And the state laws are what? Superior. You see that? Cause you got statutory laws, you got laws, you can pass bills into law. Now, you, you've decolonized. Why? Because you did what? You emerged as a sovereign and independent state. You did not emerge as a sovereign and independent temple. It's state rights. Now you have a right to your nationality. And now you're free, but who's free? Both what? The state and the people. It must be a combination of the two. Cause the people represent the state, and the state represents the people. However, at the end of the day, once you check all these boxes, guess what you can do on Friday or Sunday? Go to church? Ayin al-baq. Islam.
Islam.